Okay, we'll call the meeting to order. And, um... Oh, sorry.
Mr. Corleone?
Here.
Dr. Corleone?
Here.
Mr. Brown?
Dr. King?
Here.
Dr. Modra?
Here.
Mr. Morello?
Here.
Ms. Novy?
Here.
Mr. O'Brien?
Here.
Mr. Palmer? Jennifer Blake?
Here.
And Jay Seraf.
Here.
Madam President.
Thank you. Please rise for the pleasure allegiance. Hi, pleasure allegiance. I am the United States of America and to the Republic of Georgia's fans. My nation, under God, indivisible, the liberty of all. Thank you. Jim, please read the New Jersey Open Public Meeting on statement.
The New Jersey Open Public Meeting was enacted to ensure the right of the public to open dance notice and to attend meetings of public body in which any business affecting their interest is discussed directly from. According to reasons of the Act, Monmouth Township Board of Education approved this meeting day. There was something that has been posted from this building, Monmouth Public Schools, Monmouth Public Library, Monmouth Township Board of Education Administrative Office, Monmouth Public School Website, and appetizers in the library.
Good, thank you. We'll hear from the high school representatives. How are you tonight?
Doing great, how are you?
Very well. Is your sweatshirt an indication?
I wish.
You went to Harvard for the forensic thing, right?
Yes. All right, everyone. The hockey team had their first game yesterday and earned themselves a very meaningful six to four win over Roxbury High School. Senior Tom Rambando got a hat trick scoring three goals. The team had a spectacular season last year, finishing top four in the state, and the school was excited to watch them go in both. Following their very big win last night, they proceeded to have a 5:00 AM practice this morning, waking up extra early to get ready for their next game tomorrow night at Metin Arena. The swim team is currently, right now, competing in their first meet of the year. Students are very excited to hear the results. Beyond our sports when looking to our school, the senior banquet is this Friday night, and over 240 students, or over two-thirds of the senior class, will be in attendance. It's one of the highest attendances we've had in years. Sophomore Sydney Kane has been named the finalist in Z100's hometown hero contest, and the student body has been actively voting. We are hoping to hear her name announced as a winner this Thursday, December 4th. If she does win, she'll be able to record and perform with top recording artists at Madison Square Garden and attend the Z100 jingle ball next month as well. On Friday, November 21st, Congressman Freely Heisen from our Congressional House District visited Mr. Riado's AP Government and Politics class. The congressman discussed current political issues and spent over 30 minutes answering questions from students. This was especially rewarded due to his opponent in this year's elections, Mark Dunett, having spoken with the class a few weeks earlier. Mr. Riado continues to maintain a strong relationship with the congressman and hopes to give his students the opportunity to meet with their congressional leaders.
For the clubs, the forensic team will be competing at Princeton University this weekend. They are lucky to defend their title as they won the tournament this past school year. Furthermore, two competitors, Jay Seraf and in extemporaneous speaking, and Noah One Flash in original oratory, were invited to compete at the summation of Round Robin and summation classic this January in Fort Lauderdale. The Round Robin will have the top 10 competitors in the nation square off to compete for an exhibition title. It will be held at the Florida Panthers NHL Team Arena, and the winner will get an autographed hockey stick. The regular tournament will proceed the Round Robin and have upwards of 150 competitors in each category. Jay will be entered in extemporaneous and impromptu speaking. Noah will be entered in original oratory, extemporaneous speaking, and impromptu speaking. The robotics team had an incredible tournament this past weekend and advanced to nationals, which will be in the near future. Key Club held a spectacular food drive two weeks ago, raising over 4,000 cans for the Monmouth Food Pantry. Many families in Monmouth and around our community had much better than skipping lengths to these efforts. Going forward, the drama club will be holding auditions for its annual spring musical, Legally Blonde, and they are excited for another great performance following a successful fall play. Many seniors are scrambling to finish college applications due January 1st, but at the same time, acceptances from top-tier schools continue to pour into our students. Seniors are very excited. Thank you.
Thank you. Very exciting time. Do you know the dates of the spring musical?
Sometime in March, I'm not sure who's accurate.
It's always a wonderful production. Thank you. Superintendent, did the board have any questions for the students? Any questions for us? Superintendent's report?
Hi, good evening, everyone. You're doing well tonight. What struck me is Jay and Jennifer were speaking tonight about the high school activities that we have with us tonight, many third grade students, who probably weren't sure exactly what you were listening to, but they were describing that some of their friends at the high school would be taking trips to Fort Lauderdale in Florida to be involved in different activities and talking about a robotics club, which makes robots that do things and compete against other robots from other schools, and lots of exciting things going on, and lots of kids waiting to find out what colleges they'll be going to. And that will be happening to you guys in just a few short years from now. And we have parents of our third graders here, and I know these are older children, or maybe they are, but maybe for the first time you're at a board meeting hearing about some of the amazing activities that take place at our high school and the success of our students. And I know in the back, we have many of our high school students, and they're involved in a government and politics course, and part of, you guys can lay if you're high school students back there. And part of their requirement is to come to a public meeting of some sort and watch and see how boards of education operate and work, and that's why they're here tonight. And we get high school students coming here regularly to be part of that. So, anyway, we're glad our third graders are here. We know you have a special presentation for us, and you're here with your teacher. I want to thank our third graders for being here. I get to see them when I visit Woodmont School sometimes, coming to your classrooms, and there are teachers here with them, and I'm going to introduce Dominic Esposito, who is the principal of Woodmont School, and he's going to do this presentation. For the teachers and students.
Thank you, Dr. Free, Dr. Shore, Dr. Wilson Littering, Dr. Corleone, Mr. Davis, Dr. King, members of the board. Thank the opportunity for allowing us to show you again what Woodmont does every single day, the great work that we get to do. It's my pleasure to introduce Mr. Dean Mauer, one of our third grade teachers and members of this third grade class who has taught you and who loves to see about the communities of our, Mr. Dean Mauer.
Thank you. Each year, each year, our students or the students in our class, we do the communities project. It's always interesting to see where the project goes, and each year, the students, student driven. I introduce communities that we see, sometimes we make roads and mats and legos and boxes and, which we have a few here, kind of got a little bit of color over there. But this year, as I was, you know, telling the students about this project, something came up that doesn't really come up too often, and the challenge of the students really just came forward, and I guess this is your Esposito about Woodmont, this unique way that the students learn about communities and said, we've got to do something about this, and I guess that's why we're here tonight to show you what we, how we learn about communities. So it's kind of unique. We don't have the projector here, but if we go to the website, another of the teacher pages, Woodmont, you can see the growth of the project. Some of the teacher pages, because I'm getting ready for the paper for the presentation or anything like that, so. And you can see how the students, each step of the way, done researching on computers, building the towns and the cities and the rural areas, and getting ready for this presentation that we're about to show. So we're going to start off with the first community, the largest one. Do you all know what the largest community is? Hey, somebody said it.
Urban.
Urban. If you want to bring up the urban community. Okay, ladies and gentlemen, this is, like we said, the urban community.
I'm Tyler D from the urban city, and I'm reading books about communities.
The urban community is very busy, so try not to get dizzy.
The population is very high.
Skyscrapers go sky high.
They work at the zoo.
Do see animals, it's true.
They're at the zoo.
Do see zookeepers, too.
People work at restaurants, do see us.
And banks, too.
Those are jobs in urban communities. Word.
Most people in the USA live in or near urban or city regions. A city is the largest kind of community. A city has busy streets, many people, and tall buildings called skyscrapers. Cities need more schools and businesses than smaller communities do. In a city crowded, buses and trains come people from place to place. Other types of transportation are taxis and subways, transportation is the way that people go.
New York, Chicago, Los Angeles are urban communities. As in other cities, many citizens, many of its citizens come from different parts of the USA, from other countries. Less personas de una comunidad forman a diferentes idiomas, con diferentes tipos de comidas y practican diferentes religiones. People in urban communities speak many different languages, eat different types of food, and practice different religions. En las comunidades campanas, las personas forman diferentes actividades y muchas veces se reúnen para jugar juegos que representan su cultura. In urban communities, people celebrate different holidays and often make play games representing their culture.
Wow, that was the urban community. You can see we had fun with it, and like I said, this was student-driven. You heard in some of the rap music, what they learned about different communities, restaurants, skyscrapers, very unique way to learn about communities, and that's how they learned about it. We did the research on the computers, we read the books, we made the projects, and this was kind of like the culminating activity. The second community, which you know we kind of live in right now, is the suburban community, so we're going to bring that up. And this was unique because when they were decided to write a song, they said, what kind of, what does a song sound like? And I said, think of what your mom and dad was into in their car, and that brought up something funny that you might catch in the song. Owen's playing the part of Bob Dylan in the back.
Suburb towns are really great. The pancakes are good, so don't be late. You can go to a pharmacy. That's what's in a suburban community. Transportation exists there, too. Maybe you'll buy a Subaru. You can ride a horse also. Football players play there, too. This song's about suburban communities.
Many large cities have smaller communities around them. A small city or town doesn't have large cities, cars are broken. Only governments will operate near railroad stations. As people move from large cities to these communities, the communities grow in suburb. Here in Monmouth Township, we are considered a suburb of Manhattan and New York City. Suburban citizens also travel to urban areas to visit interesting places. Many suburbs have their own theaters and museums. When nearby cities often have more, additional suburban communities have towns that have their own theaters and town shops.
Hey, great, guys, this is a good one. You might have heard that song before, right? Catchy song. And like I said, they came up with all the lyrics, they wrote the little reports that they're reading as well, they have the big projects to show for it, they did the important research, so just such a unique way that this class took on the responsibility of learning. We're going to bring up the last community, which is one, everybody? Hey, Jonas. Okay, we're going to bring up. You can see they're dressed a little bit like they're from a rural community, too. Our one actor is not here with us today, so they're going to have to try to win our simitrons part, but I know they're going to do a great job. So like we said, and Abdul, thank you. Can't forget our friend Abdul, who couldn't be here as well. So that's it, rural communities, we thank you so. Please check out our website, and you can see the growth of this great project. Thank you all.
Rural communities. Our little cows moo. I got a truck in my school. I live in a foreign capital. Rural communities.
A rural region is in the countryside, away from cities and large towns. In rural communities, you can expect to see cows, sheep, goats, and horses on farms.
Wow, Deanna, small towns, farm fields, and woods make up rural regions. In a rural community, there are a lot of wide-open spaces, unlike urban communities that have a lot of places close together.
Many people in a rural community work in agriculture. Agriculture is the racing of farm animals and the growing of crops for sale. However, not all rural communities have farms and ranches.
Rural areas offer lots of different outdoor activities, such as fishing, skiing, and hockey. Thank you for listening.
Thank you all so much. We got homework to do, so we're going to get out of here, but we thank you so much. Have a great night.
Thank you, Mr. Mara. Thank you, children.
Thank you, everybody.
Mr. Mara, do you, are you going to leave those? Are you going to take them? You're going to take them? I'm going to recess for two minutes, just so the board has an opportunity to look at them. Okay, no one's silly, just come forward. Thank you. Any community reports? Finance, curriculum policy?
Curriculum's going to be in the next week.
And John?
Security's going to be, thank you both.
And communications is going to be in the next week. Jim, do you have anything? Let's see, delegate liaisons. Mike, did you want to do Mars County School Boards? You were over there.
Yeah, I would like to say, didn't wear your control on me, but I would like to say, I found the meeting so informative. I was just sitting here thinking as we're talking about the presentation that was on STEM to STEAM, to both programs, sort of the latter being more all encompassing, but it was a great presentation on where some of the programs are headed, towards science, technology, engineering, and mechanics, and of course, with the A, the arts front. It was a very good presentation on what things are actually, can be included in the arts, such as design, which is essential in engineering and so on. So I thought it was a very good presentation of board members to get up to speed. I wish everybody could have seen this.
And the A part of the program was delivered by our own assistant, supervisor of the arts.
Great, yeah. Thank you.
On January 29th, there's another Mars County School Boards meeting, it's on school finance. It's at the Villa in Mount Lakes, and presenting at that meeting will be Dr. Freed and Mr. Teles. So we'll look forward to that. And we're hoping at every meeting, there's a segment dedicated to good news and sharing, and we're hoping that maybe we can corral a few students from the original science research, of course, to talk to the group of school board members at that meeting, so we're working on that. Anything else under delegate liaisons? Any Mustang Association or the Education Commission?
Mustang is tomorrow.
Okay, Mustang is tomorrow.
The Education Commission tomorrow is on.
Very good, thank you. Any PTC liaison reports? I went to the Cedar Hill meeting last week. It was a short meeting. They did change the date for the 50th anniversary. Two of our schools are celebrating 50th anniversary, Woodmont and Cedar Hill. They changed the date of the party, of the celebration, from a date in December to February 19th, and they're combining it with Woodmont, so it should be a really nice, really nice celebration for both of those schools. I'll open up to the public for any items on the agenda. Seeing none, I'm going to take a moment of personal privilege to make a comment, and I intentionally waited for the little ones to leave, so I didn't want to politicize in front of them. But as all of you know, yesterday, Dr. Freed sent a letter to all staff and parents that this will likely be his last year in Monmouth. Paul's the finalist for the position of superintendent of schools in White Plains in New York. Dr. Freed, if he were to stay here, would be facing a 30% pay cut at the renewal of his contract in July, and this magnitude of loss of salary is not something that is possible, nor is it fair. The board is heartbroken, and I'm sure members of the community are heartbroken. However, the news is not unexpected. While the board would have unanimously renewed Dr. Freed's contract, it is not fair to ask someone who for the past four and a half years has successfully and effectively led an organization with 600 employees, 4,000 students, and a $70 million budget to take a 30% pay cut. We're losing an exceptionally talented and experienced superintendent to an ill-conceived and mean-spirited regulation that caps superintendent salaries, but ironically does not save a single tax dollar. Dr. Freed is passionate about education. He has brought innovative programs to the district in cost-effective ways. His ability to make improvements to our programs, our facilities, our safety and security with minimal tax impact will be greatly missed. He is a thoughtful man and a true servant leader, who inspires others to do better. A leader like this is not found often, and it is a shame to lose him in this way. I am heartened by the fact that here in Monmouth, we have wonderfully talented administrators and an incredible teaching staff. However, not only is New Jersey regularly losing talented and experienced sitting superintendents to other states, we may be losing a whole generation of new superintendents, current principals and assistant superintendents, who once aspired to become superintendents, may choose to stay put or will be recruited by neighboring states. I truly hope we can hold on to the talent we have here. The governor's office doubts the lack of a mass exodus of superintendents since the cap was enacted as an indicator of success. What a pathetic benchmark of success. They also indicate the cap has led to greater diversity in the position, so I guess the governor believes it's okay to ask superintendents of diversity to work for less money. It surprises me that the governor, who must or should understand the value of leadership, has so foolishly underestimated and devalued the importance of the chief school administrator. New Jersey's losses are the gains of New York, Pennsylvania, Connecticut, and all the other 46 states of our union who have no caps. Interestingly, charter schools have no caps on their superintendent salaries, so maybe Monmouth should consider becoming the state's first charter district. That's all I have to say.
Karen, I know that you're extremely passionate about this issue because about a year ago, on a statewide basis, you worked really diligently to get legislators to wake up. We went down to the Department of Education to try to speak to people there, and in the end, it's really the governor who's made this decision. What perplexes me the most is that Monmouth used to be considered a revolving door for superintendents back six to eight years ago and beyond. We had such a hard time bringing a quality superintendent into our district, and when we came upon Paul through a search, that was a unique scenario, we felt as a board so pleased that we had found someone that was going to lead our district in a great direction, that we stepped outside our comfort zone and offered Dr. Freed a five-year contract as opposed to a three-year, which had been customary. But we did so because we had this sense, and it turns out, four and a half years later, Dr. Freed, you have done just such a marvelous job in this district, and those of us who are close and even at a distance have felt your presence in so many different directions. I had to take a look at some newspaper articles after I read your letter to the community, and there was an editorial in the Star Ledger on September 12th. And I speak now as an individual, and the editorial, which is from September 12th Star Ledger, made a point, said that the title of the editorial is "The Superintendent Salary Cap is a Terrible Idea, repeal it." And a quote from that article was "Our state is losing good school leaders for what amounts to a political stunt. In a time of belt-tightening, well-paid superintendents were easy targets for the governor, Christie whipped up false hope that cutting their pay would make a substantial difference, but in reality, it's barely a blip. The total savings is less, well less, than 1%." When you think about what a quality superintendent can do for a district, obviously, there is appeal because New York State, Connecticut, Pennsylvania are poaching many superintendents from our state. And as Karen said, it's a very sad day for our district and a very sad day for the state as well, and hopefully someday our governor will understand the type of negative effect he is having in the state with an edict such as this.
Thank you, madam.
Madam President?
Yes, ma'am.
I don't want to be jumping in, but I feel like there's something I'd love to say as well, if you don't mind.
Please.
I guess some would consider I am skeptical about many things, but... But in the last 11 months, being involved in education myself for some time, I have come to gain a great deal of respect for Dr. Freed. You know, I have watched, observed without too much comment, the way he conducts himself, the way he works with the people and the resources that we have in our district. And you may recall that some meetings ago, I even mentioned the degree of surprise that I found in the last year with the humanistic approach that is taken to our students and our employees and to the betterment of our entire district. I was stunned. I shouldn't have been stunned, but I sort of was when we found this out. Because I see it that powers above us, for whatever political gain I am not clear, grandstanding, I believe, are gambling with our children in our school district, putting us in a position, and putting all administrators in the state in a position, which questions do they want to have the aspirations to go on to lead a school district under the conditions that the governor has created? I think it's a huge disservice to all the children in the state, to all the school districts, to the employees in the school districts, to everyone involved, what has happened. And I cannot begin to say how disappointed I am with what this does. It undermines so many concepts that are part of our system, having high aspirations, incentives, encouraging people to have the willingness to lead and to step forward. It's a very difficult thing. And I just cannot tell you how disappointed I am that we have to go through this process. And that's about it. I feel terrible. I wish we could somehow express to our governor the disappointment that we feel. I'm not asking your motioning, but in some ways, some resolution to tell him how we feel about how this impacts our district. I just am at a loss for words how to communicate to this gentleman how we feel about this. And I'm at a loss for words to communicate to Dr. Freed the confidence that I've gained over the last year in his leadership. I feel terrible about this whole thing.
Thank you, Mike. There's no one else? Motion for item J through O. Did you want to say anything?
You know, I just do want to say one thing. I do want to thank the Board of Education for their kind words tonight. It means a great deal to me. And for all the support you've shown me over my time in the district and the community as well. As I tried to express in my letter, it's been a really joyful experience for me to be here in this community and to have felt that support from our staff, from the students, from community members and from the board. And I know that this is kind of about me because I'm sitting here as superintendent of schools. But the one thing I do want to say, and I think it's important to say, is that the salary cap occurred after I had been in the district about three months. And of course, it didn't affect me because my contract was for five years. And it didn't affect superintendents until their contracts expired, which mine will do at the end of this coming June. But I sit in a group of superintendents in Morris County. There's over 30 of us. And over the last four years, I have seen, year after year, superintendents who have served their districts in Morris County go through this, where they have gone from making what a salary that they thought was fair and just, and their boards thought was fair and just, to taking enormous cuts in pay because of the salary cap. And I have seen how disheartened those individuals have been. It's been painful for me to watch. And my background has been in the U.S. And I arrived here and watching these very experienced, dedicated individuals who have really worked their whole careers as teachers, principals perhaps, supervisors, assistant superintendents, becoming superintendents, go through this, has really been a very, very upsetting process. Many of them are younger than I am, have lengthy careers in front of them. They have families. And it's been pretty awful to watch them go through this experience. And it makes me concerned for New Jersey, for the children of New Jersey and the communities. So I just wanted to share that. I think it's significant.
Thank you, Paul. Okay, from the board, motion for item J through O. Any questions on J? K?
No, you know, I just want to call attention. Item K seven was something that was in our pack. And I think that that is something which looks like a very good forward-thinking concept. And I look forward to seeing some savings unlocked in it with that. I like the idea.
L? M? N through O. You're welcome.
Mr. Morel?
Yes.
Mr. Cooney?
Yes.
Dr. Modra?
Yes.
Mrs. Novy?
Yes.
Mr. O'Brien?
Aye.
Dr. Kane?
Yes.
And Dr. Courtland?
Yes.
Motion's passed.
Thank you.
Any other business or additional community reports? I'll just mention that on November 19th, the original science research course had a freshman recruiting evening. And it was extremely well-attended. And the students who were already in the program did a presentation that was, I just thought really explained what the original science program is all about in terms that a freshman could understand. So I would just like to congratulate them for it being well-construted and it's a learned program for the freshman. Anyone else? General Board comments?
General Board comments. Mike, you and I, Monday night, Tuesday night, went to a meeting the town council had with the public about the new set of power lines that are proposed to be coming in. And it was very informational. The town council seems to be standing together. And I wish them a lot of luck and hope that they're able to push back a little bit with the JC P and L company.
Thank you, Matt. Any more comments from the board? Okay, I'll open it up to the public for anything on the agenda, off the agenda, whatever you'd like to speak about.
Andrea, Order 7, Britain Drive. I don't want to get into the politics of the salary cap. I mean, it's clear from my position that the governor is not really caring about the students of New Jersey. I do want to say thank you to all the board members that have spent many hours meeting with congressmen, state senators, Department of Education, as well as whatever parent leaders have met in attempts to try and get this changed. So it is appreciated. We know that this is not something that you had wanted to come out this way. To Dr. Freed, from someone that was very lucky to have the opportunity to work with you, I just want to say thank you on behalf of many parents for your transparency, for your ability to keep us informed and communicate with us, for your ability to invite us in in a lot of decision-making. And I think all that helped to move this district forward in leaps and bounds over the past four and a half years. You will be missed. Thank you.
Thank you, Andrea. Anyone else?
I think it's important to note that Dr. Freed will be here until the end of his contract. So we are self-forcement to have six more months.
That is important to note. I agree.
Is there anyone else?
Helen Berman, Senator Harper Place. I have a concern about a memo that was sent out today by the principal of the Hilldale School. I don't know if you're aware of this. It was sent out today, all the kids. Some commotion.
We would not be aware of it, did?
I think they heard it.
Mr. Berman, the first question I'll ask you is, did you speak to the principal at Hilldale?
No, we didn't. They came in late. My wife and I came home. Our daughter was quite disturbed by the letter. So there was no time to react. And seeing on the marquee that we had a meeting tonight, I was wanting to bring it up and see what was going on because I understand kids are kids, no matter what grade school level, they need to be entertained by themselves and with their friends. But as of now, in Hilldale, the lunches are pretty much taken away from them. They have to sit with their class and basically not even be able to associate with other friends that they may have in the school. And I guess it just seems like when a punishment comes up, it's not directed at a group of kids, but everyone's involved in that letter. You know, taking lunches away and having to sit with the class, okay, it brings a bond to the classroom and their friendship there. But if you're going to start taking away, possibly taking away recess, where the kids don't, I mean, they won't be able, you know, everyone's schedule is as crazy as it can be as it is. They're not going to have any kind of social interact with any of their kids at the school. I'm sorry. I think based on that letter, I think my overall opinion, and take it for what it's worth, and with no disrespect to any of the teachers in the lunchroom or the parents volunteering. But if the principal has to whistle six times and the kids are still, you know, it can't be the entire lunchroom, I don't think. But from what I understand, it was just a group of kids. And the control was lost. And without due respect to any of the teachers there, you know, how do you control the kids? A whistle, and they're saying that, you know, "God forbid," you know, "fire alarm" or something went off. Fire alarm was going to be a lot louder than six whistles, you know, that you would think are coming from a gym. And it just seems like we're, as, you know, I was half chokingly saying that it's becoming, and I know we're spoiled by the free-to-face principle, but it just seems like we're becoming, in my opinion, I think, very military school type where everything is so disciplined with the kids. And the kids are coming home and eating. And I hear them with playdates once in a while, that they're just very frustrated by that. And I just wanted to bring this letter to your attention. And it just seems like we're, somewhat along the way, I think we're getting at the end, either with punishment towards the kids or there's a lack of control in the lunchroom. And to possibly take away recess, it's real, I think it would be a big detriment to the kids. And I was just hoping that maybe someone can look into this and see. I mean, I know we can hear it from kids' point of view, from other parents. But unless the board is aware of what's happening inside the school for the remainder of the balance of the school year, I think there needs to be someone who give between student interaction and teacher-principal interaction.
Thank you for coming out tonight and for bringing this to our attention. You know, the board is really the court's last resort.
I understand.
And I understand that you just got the letter and didn't have the opportunity.
I came home, my kid is crying because she has to write this essay tonight that's due tomorrow. I mean, it's in cam. It's going to affect you. And I just, you know, I decided to take the moment of opportunity because tonight's a meeting to address the board with this.
No, I understand. I would suggest you reach out to the principal. Dr. Freed is reading the letter now. You can certainly reach out to him as well.
Okay. All right, thank you.
You're welcome.
So just a comment. We'll certainly look into the matter as you're, you know, bringing this forward to us. I do see the letter that, as you mentioned, she asked the children to do a writing piece on the importance of school safety and the like. But we'll certainly do some research about this and find out what the situation was like in the cafeteria that kind of caused that reaction.
I appreciate that. Like I said, I stayed with whistleblowing. And I don't know if it was just at the heat of the moment that this letter went out and the assignment was done. But it just seems like slowly, I'm hearing as a father, with other fathers and other mothers even, that things are getting more stringent and stringent with the kids, that there's no flexibility for them to go out and enjoy themselves, whether from recess or lunchtime.
Well, again, it doesn't, as you know the letter, she's not taking recess away. So the children did get to have their free time.
Right, and stand there, but just open the wall, you know.
Right, so we'll do some research into it and see what the issues were. And certainly, as Dr. Courtland was suggesting, calling this a serenos and acquiring, you know, to her is also a good idea. Thank you.
Thank you. Is there anyone else? Okay. Motion to adjourn.
Motion.